Okay, I could see I'm Mary. All right. So all the commissioners are here, yes. So with that, I would like to call to order the January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two Montgomery County Board of County Commissioner meeting. Thank you guys for joining us via Zoom. I know this is a little different. Our first time doing it full Zoom, but we appreciate everybody's flexibility. So to get us started, I would like Mary Hassel if you would lead us in a prayer, please. I would appreciate it.
Thank you. Dear Heavenly Father, Lord, we just thank you that you incline your ear to us, Father, that you are mindful of us. Lord, we pray that you would give us wisdom as county leaders to make decisions that not only honor you, Lord, but are the best decisions for the citizens of our county. Father, we pray that you would guide us in the directions that we should go, Lord, and in the things that we should be about, Lord, and we just praise you for always being there for us and always being good. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. We will move forward too with our pledge of allegiance. Unfortunately, here in my office at the Mercantile, I do not have a flag. But if you guys would pretend there's a flag in the background, and if you would join me in the pledge of allegiance, I would appreciate it. So I pledge allegiance
allegiance
to the flag
to the flag
of the United States
of America
of America and to the Republic for which it stands one nation
one nation
under God indivisible with liberty
and justice
and moral Thank you. Now we'll share because we have presenters on there. So as you see names on your screen and faces, the county commissioners, there are four that is on this meeting tonight. So there's me, Dana Dawson. You have Frenchon Robinson, you have John Shaw, and then you have, it says I, Mary, so Mary Hassel. So we are your Board of County Commissioners. So glad to have you here tonight. To get us started, also, I do need to have a motion to approve our agenda as written. I can have a motion, please?
I make a motion, we approve the agenda.
All right, Mary Hassel with a motion and a second.
A second.
And Kay Robinson, second. Any opposed? So then our agenda is approved. Next topic on our agenda is our consent agenda. We have multiple items on the consent agenda. We've had this, I think everyone is familiar with all the pieces that are on here. Is there any questions about anything on consent before we move forward? If no questions, I do need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, John. John Shaw with a motion, a second.
A second.
Mary Hassel with the second. Any opposed? Nope. So then the consent agenda is approved. Next, we do have two presentations this evening, so I'm not sure who is presenting for whom. But our first presentation tonight is our fiscal twenty, fiscal year twenty-one financial audit. So Frankie, is there any introductions you need to make or just turn it directly over to those guys?
Very briefly, our fiscal year ending twenty-one audit is being presented tonight by Malden and Jenkins. Tim Lyons is the principal accountant there. Cynthia Bigger is also joining us, who will be making comment to the board. They have a presentation here for you and will be available for questions. And in a nutshell, the audit is the county's financial report card for the year. So, Tim, Cynthia, I'll turn it over to you guys.
Thanks Frankie, I appreciate that introduction. Just to confirm, everyone can hear me okay? Audio is good?
Yeah.
All right, great. I do have some PowerPoint slides and I just tried to share my screen, but it's saying that the screen sharing is disabled because of who's hosting the meeting. So I don't know if we want to try and make me a co-host so I can share my screen. If not, I can certainly just try to present without the... Oh wait, there we go. I see it.
Yeah.
Quick on the quick on the, quick on the Zoom controls. So, okay, so everybody can see my screen. Great. So we'll get started. I know you all have a full agenda tonight. Certainly don't want to take any more time than is necessary, but briefly, we'll just kind of go over the engagement team, which Frankie kind of already introduced us to y'all. We'll go over the results of the audit. We've got a slide and just a couple, you know, a few financial trends to look at, focusing mostly on the county's general fund. That's the chief operating fund, probably the fund that's the most important to the county and to the board. Some comments, recommendations, and some other items. And certainly I've got a slot down there for questions at the end, but if anybody has a question, right, you know, feel free to ask away or to stop me as I'm going through the presentation tonight. Just by way of kind of reintroductions, I know this is the, you know, this is really the first year we've had a chance to come before y'all and present the audit to the board. This is our second year of working with the county. You know, I got a slide on there, you know, about Malden and Jenkins. I mean, really, serving government, serving local governments throughout the southeast is something that is really a big part of what we do. And we're excited and appreciate the opportunity to be of service to Montgomery County. Just by way of reiterating, you know, my name is Tim Lyons and I served as the engagement partner on the county's audit. The county's audit is based out of our Columbia, South Carolina office, which is where I predominantly practice. Although I do have about fifteen governments in the state of North Carolina that I work with on an annual basis, including five other counties. So Cynthia Bigger, who is also on the call with me tonight, is a senior associate with M&amp;J. And she served as kind of the in charge and sort of ran the day-to-day of the county's audit, working very closely with Amber and other, you know, parts of the county to accomplish all that we have to accomplish as far as performing the financial and the compliance audit. And then every one of our audits goes through what we call an engagement quality control review. So when we get done, when we get finished, when Cynthia and I wrap up, we send everything over to another partner in our governmental practice who has no other involvement, no other role with the county's audit, to make sure that we've done everything we need to do. We've dotted every I, we've crossed every T. And that was a gentleman by the name of Trey Scott, who actually did the county's quality control review last year as well. So that's your engagement team for the county's twenty twenty-one audit. Just, you know, to remind everybody and make sure we're kind of all on the same page with what kind of audit we're talking about. This is the audit of the county's financial statements. Those financial statements are the responsibility of the county's management, and our responsibility as the independent external auditors is to come in and audit them and express an opinion on those financial statements. That second bullet point there, our report on the county's financial statements, we issued an unmodified, which is just a fancy auditing term for a clean opinion. There's no higher or better opinion that you can get. So we had a clean opinion on the county's financial statements. And so what that means is that when you look at the financial report, it is considered to present fairly in all material respects. The county's net position, the county's fund balance, its results of operations, and its cash flows for the fiscal year ended June thirty, twenty twenty-one. We are also responsible as part of our audit of the county for issuing, there's actually three additional reports that are contained in the compliance section at the back of the county's audit. The first one is our report on internal controls over financial reporting that is required by government auditing standards. We issued that report. We did have one finding to report this year, and I'm going to go over that in just a few minutes. And we did have no instances of non-compliance, though. We are required to perform tests of the county's compliance with certain laws, regulations, contracts, those types of things. We had no instances of non-compliance that were noted in the report on internal controls over financial reporting. The second and third report that we have to issue are kind of part of the reporting package of what is known as the single audit. As the recipient of federal and state funding, the county is required to undergo a single audit when the county spends more than seven hundred fifty thousand dollars of federal expenditures or more than five hundred thousand dollars of state expenditures. We're required to go through a risk-based selection process that we identify what are known as major programs that we are required to audit. This year, we had six programs we needed to audit. At the federal level, we audited Medicaid. We audited the county's expenditures of its coronavirus relief funds. And we audited the county's USDA loans that were the permanent financing for the new high school. We also, from a state level, audited the Department of Environmental Quality revolving loan program, some of the projects going on in the Public Utilities Fund, the Foster Care and Guardianship Program, and the One North Carolina Fund. So those were the programs we had to audit. And both at the federal level, which is one report, and the state level, which is the second report, we issued, we issued a unmodified or a clean opinion on compliance for each major program. And we had no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal control over compliance. So very, very clean compliance reports for the county's single audits this year. The next couple of slides are what are kind of known in the audit world as the required communications. We have submitted these to the county in writing, and so I'm not going to go through and read every single one of these, but I do think, you know, as somebody who sits on a couple of boards myself, I do think that there are some of these that are important for those charged with governance to hear directly from the external auditor. So the first bullet point there about significant accounting policies, I think what's important to point out here, and this kind of encompasses that second one too about management judgments and accounting estimates, is that in order to prepare financial statements in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, which is the kind of the standard setting that we have to follow, we have, management makes estimates. There are some judgments that have to go into usefulized of capital assets, the allowance for accounts receivable. There's a lot of actuarial assumptions that go into the pension and O-Cub information that's in the county's financial reports. And basically, as a part of our audit, we look at all of those estimates. We look at those assumptions. And I think what I'd like to point out and communicate to the board is that the county has not taken any sort of a aggressive accounting position. There are no transactions that the county has that are outside of authoritative guidance, or maybe we're not, maybe the county's gotten itself involved in some sort of a controversial or emerging issue. None of that is present. All of the county's estimates that we have in there that we audit are very comparable and consistent with what we see at other counties across the state of North Carolina. Relationship with management is another thing that I'll always like to point out. We received full cooperation from the county's management and staff. You know, okay, so what does that mean? It sounds like you guys kind of, you know, does that mean you guys were like buddy-buddy, working together? What that means is that when we were going through our audit process, of course, we picked samples and we request a ton of documentation. We need to speak with people from all kinds of different departments, people who are over programs, people who are over finance. And so in doing all of those things, management was fully cooperative with us. They got the documentation that we asked for. We had access to everybody we needed to talk to. So full cooperation from management, I think, is an important thing for the board to know. And then last but not least, our independence. I think, you know, it's always good for the auditor to point out to the board that, you know, we have to be independent of the county in order to render an opinion on the county's financial statements as the independent CPA. Not only do we meet all of the professional ethical standards that we have to by the ASCPA, but because we performed those single audits that I was talking about a minute ago, we have to be independent in accordance with government auditing standards, which are actually even a bit more stringent than just the normal ASCPA professional ethical standards. We meet all those requirements and we fulfill the requirements to say that we truly are independent of the county and thus can express an opinion on the county's financial statements. As I mentioned before, one slide on fund balance, I think this is a good slide to kind of point out. I think as a county, I think Montgomery County should be proud of its general fund. When you look at the general fund's fund balance, so when we talk about fund balance, we're talking about kind of what's left over. So we've got, we've got assets, we've got our cash, receivables, prepaid items, our inventory, those types of things, minus our liabilities, our accounts payable, accrued payroll, you know, all those other things that we have to true up and record at year-end. And fund balance is kind of what's left over. And the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, or the GASB, requires us to break up fund balance into, you know, multiple different categories. The main ones here, that green chunk you'll see that kind of fluctuates between about nine and ten percent of fund balance, that is what is known as restricted for state stabilization. The state of North Carolina requires you to do a calculation every year where essentially you can't appropriate for spending that portion of fund balance that is not cash, unrestricted cash or unrestricted investment. And I think this is a good trend to see that over time, the county's restricted for state stabilization has stayed relatively consistent over the last five years. What that means is that we're not spending down all of our cash. We have, you know, we don't have a huge number of fund balance that is maybe, you know, maybe in accounts receivable, that's maybe in due to other funds where we're lending money back and forth between other funds. The general fund's cash position is staying relatively consistent over time, which is a good trend to see. And then the other big, you know, big chunk here, that blue box there is your unassigned fund balance. And so we have, we have restricted fund balance, which is where outside, you know, whether it's by law, by regulation, has restricted what we can spend that money on. Then we've got committed and assigned fund balance, which is where we, as our, you know, the committed is by the board, assigned is by management. We've placed constraints on how we're going to use some of those funds. The blue part is the unassigned. That's what's left over. That's what the county has available for spending at its discretion. And that unassigned fund balance is about sixty percent of the county's annual expenditures, which, you know, which is well in excess of what the state requires you to have as a minimum. And it's, you know, the GFOA, which is the Government Finance Officers Association, would typically recommend that you have, you know, about twenty-five to thirty percent just to protect yourselves from fluctuations in revenue streams, from changing in the timing of when, you know, revenues come in, which in the last two years, there's been a lot of uncertainty about that with, you know, COVID and everything else. So the county's fund balance, unassigned fund balance and the general fund, a very healthy position there. And so those are all kind of positive things to look at when we're looking at fund balance of the general fund at June thirtieth of twenty twenty-one. The next couple of slides are just what, you know, our kind of recommendations from the audit. This first one, revenue recognition and maintenance of related balance sheet accounts. As I mentioned just a couple of minutes ago about our report on internal controls over financial reporting, we did have one finding that we had to report this year. Now, when we hear the word finding, obviously that kind of raises our radar. It sounds bad. I wish that in some ways in the audit world, I wish we had a better word for some of that, but but what, really what happened and what we talk about on these slides here is that the government auditing standards, which we have to follow, that's the report that we're issuing, they have really tied our hands as auditors by what we can and can't do to help out any one of our audit clients, and in this case, the county, with making sure that the numbers at year-end are reported correctly. And essentially what they've said is that when we, when we make adjustments, we have to evaluate those adjustments against our various materiality thresholds because we have to be independent of the county. We can't help the county with closeout, with journal entries, with truing up balances. And if those balances, if those adjustments we have to make happen to be material, we have to report a finding because of the way that government auditing standards defines deficiencies and a material weakness, in this case, in internal controls. So this is not a situation where we've uncovered any, there's no, we've not uncovered any fraud, we've not uncovered missing funds, nothing like that. Really, this was just a couple of adjustments we had to make to get the numbers reported correctly at year-end. And I think, you know, even, even to kind of narrow that even a little further, in both cases, we were making adjustments in what are typically known as project funds. So in the Water Projects Fund, which is this first journal entry that you're seeing here, where we had to adjust, we had some receivables that had been accrued in previous years. And when the cash receipts came in, when we collected on those receivables, they were related to some Department of Environmental Quality loan draws and some grant funds. When the funds came in, rather than reducing that receivable we had set up, they had been receipted again. So we had to make an adjustment to reduce that receivable balance, to get that properly reported at year-end. And the second one is in the County Capital Projects Fund, and it relates to the unspent amount of coronavirus relief funds at year-end. This is, this was a specific technical issue that the Governmental Accounting Standards Board had to actually issue a bulletin on, how to account for this. And, you know, really, at the end of the day, like I've been saying, this is really just about adjusting some numbers and making sure we get them properly reported at year-end. And because the dollar amounts happened to be fairly large, they were material, and thus we had to report them as a finding in the report. The next couple of slides here have to do with recommendations that we make, that we issue as a part of what is called our management letter. You know, these are just recommendations, items that we observed as we went through the audit, not a, not a material, you know, issue or a material adjustment that was needed. And we just, these are more just reminders for management. As we go through the financial closeout process next year, this first one has to do with the accrue, the calculation of accrued compensated absences. We need to make sure that we're including the employer portion of FICA taxes in that liability. The second one here has to do with retainage payable. When we have projects that we're doing and we're withholding money from the contractors as we go through the projects, we need to make sure that we capture that retainage payable number as a liability. Again, it was not material for this year, but certainly as a project goes along, that retainage balance can grow. We want to make sure that we get those liabilities recorded. And then I'll stop and I'll kind of focus on this information technology one here. Really, this, we consider this to be kind of an industry recommendation. This is not specific to Montgomery County. If you, if you, you know, look at any of our, of our government audit reports that we issue, we consider this to be an industry recommendation because unfortunately, cybersecurity and information technology, cybersecurity risks, all those things are all, need to be forefront when, in this environment we're in, the remote stuff, we're looking at new systems, new softwares, connecting new devices to our systems. You know, for a long time, we could kind of say, look, a lot of these, these, you know, cybersecurity hacks or attacks that we saw were focused on fairly large organizations. But now, because in some ways they've gotten so good at doing this stuff, organizations of all sizes are being targeted. So we just want to make sure that the county is considering cybersecurity, information, risk management when we're implementing new systems, considering new softwares, connecting new devices. If we have third-party vendors that have access to our systems, that can take the form of a formal cybersecurity risk management program, or even just looking at a cybersecurity risk management program and picking out those pieces that we think are relevant and important to us would be a good, you know, step for any government organization to take. And that's why I say we consider this to be kind of an industry recommendation. This is not specific to Montgomery County. We've not uncovered some, you know, flaw in the IT system. We just want to make sure that we're paying attention to considering all of this as we go through and evaluate operations at the county. And then last but not least here, I've just got a couple of slides. I know I could sit here and I could talk for a long time about new governmental accounting standards, but that's not what you all want me to do tonight. I promise you that. But just to remind, just to kind of say, hey, look, we do have some pretty significant standards coming down the pipe. We're going to work with Amber and make sure that we get those implemented correctly at the county. The GASB is doing a lot of work and considering changing some things. No formal standards on this, this second set of items here yet, but certainly they're in the hopper and could be coming out as soon as later on this year. The feds continue to take a lot of action. The Department of Treasury just issued their final rule with regard to the CSLFRF, the Coronavirus State and Local Recovery Fund. They just issued that final rule last week, so lots of information coming out. The state of North Carolina does a very good job of this. LGC is putting out information constantly. The UNC School of Government is putting out issue constantly, but we just want to make sure that we're considering all of these things as we receive these funds, as we spend these funds, making sure that we're doing everything right, because there is a high level of visibility on how these funds are being spent. And then last but not least, you know, just by way of making sure that you all are aware, we do free quarterly continuing education and newsletters for our governmental clients. These are sessions that we do for clients only. We've been doing them exclusively over Zoom since April of twenty twenty. If any of the members of the board are interested in getting the mailing that we do for this, we send out emails, you can get with Amber or Frankie. They both have my email address. We just need your name and your email. I can add it to our database and make sure that you're getting this. You know, sometimes it's going to be fairly technical accounting topics, which may not appeal to everybody, but we do from time to time cover things like HR and risk management and budgeting and other sort of non-technical accounting things. So if anybody is interested, please, please let us know. We'll be happy to get you on that mailing list. So with that, I've said a lot. I will unshare my screen, and I would be happy to take any questions that anybody has about the audit.
So county commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Lyons? I know that's a lot for your brains to absorb. What was all?
No.
No? Mary, John, anything at this time?
I'm fine, thank you.
All right. Well, Mr. Lyons, thank you so much. Lot for us to absorb. Thank you for just plugging through our audit. It sounds like we're in good shape and hats off to Mr. Manus and to Amber also for having everything prepared for the county. And we look forward to getting this year wrapped here before long. My gosh, you know, our fiscal twenty-one, twenty-two will be to a close in just a few short months. It just passes overnight. So thank you very much.
And certainly I do understand that it's a, it's a, it's a lot of information. So as y'all are going through this, if you do have anything you, you know, want to talk about or questions you have, feel free, let me know. Like I said, Amber has my contact information. I'm happy to hop on a Zoom or a phone call, you know, or meet in person if you would like to. Just, just, just reach out and let me know if you have any questions.
That would be good. Thank you so much for your time this evening. We appreciate it. And thank you to Ms. Bigger for being here as well. Thank you so much. All right, Frankie, would you like to introduce our next presentation?
Be happy to. The county commissioned a study, a broadband study a year or so ago, just before my time, if I remember correctly. And River Street Communications conducted the study for us. We have a couple individuals from River Street here tonight to present the findings of their study. And as we all know, broadband is a critical deficiency here in the county, especially as you get into the unincorporated areas. And the information I received from River Street was very eye-opening. Some big, a big price tag there, but nevertheless, some information we need to know and some information we already know, and this confirms it. But I'll, I'll let you guys get to the meat of the presentation, and I'll introduce Greg Coltrane and Bill Shilato with River Street Networks.
Thank you. We appreciate everybody allowing us to be with you tonight. The, we had the great opportunity to meet with your county manager and several other representatives from the county a few weeks back. And we were really pleased to be able to kind of dig a little deeper into helping Montgomery County with broadband. Bill Shilato is our business development manager from North Carolina, and he's worked really closely on this project, and I've asked him to run through the presentation tonight. So we hear chime in here.
Thank you all. Is my audio okay?
Yes.
Yeah.
Is my shared screen up that says River Street Networks?
Yeah.
Excellent. First, I want to start by thanking the county commissioners, Madam Chair and the commissioners for serving in your role. We get to see a lot of officials in the, in the work that we do, and we continue to be thankful and appreciative of what you do and the service that you're bringing to the citizens of your county. You didn't sign up for some events that have been fostered on you, but you've shouldered those and you're caring a lot for the citizens and you're, and you're serving in a way that most of you probably never anticipated having to deal with. And so for that, we're thankful and appreciative. We're thankful that you allowed us to be here this evening. We also know that the county manager and the staff that serve you and the citizens of your county are also dealing with unprecedented events. This COVID was certainly throwing a curveball at us that nobody anticipated or expected. We also know that this is new. This telecommunications thing, this broadband thing, has come at you full steam in a way that nobody could have predicted ten, fifteen years ago as well. So there's a huge learning curve going on, and we understand and appreciate that. We hope to be a part of the solution for you. So this is a presentation by Greg and I. Greg is the Vice President of Business Development. He previously was the CEO of the Tri-County Telecommunications Membership Co-op in Hyde and Beaufort County area. And then when he joined with Wilkes Telecommunications, he became the Vice President of Business Development. He really is He really is uh the second CEO for our organization and is uh an expert uh in federal and state funding uh to the degree that uh impresses even us who've been in this industry for twenty or more years. So jumping into the presentation, uh as uh county manager Manis said earlier that you commissioned us in December, uh late December, early January to do this broadband study at the cost of sixty thousand dollars for a fixed uh or a fiber to the home, fiber to the premise. They're synonymous terms. Uh and the fixed wireless portion cost was set at twenty thousand dollars. We've invoiced and you've paid that early on and so those funds have already been uh received and accepted. And so there's no issue as far as those uh things come up. So in July of twenty twenty-one, we completed the broadband expansion plan and we had an opportunity to brief Mr. Brian Helms, who was served in your IT role and now serving your school admirably well there. Uh Mr. Helms uh received that uh a verbal presentation. Uh and then we also knew at the time that there was some fairly large changeover uh in the county staff. Uh in November twenty twenty-one, Mr. Van Heath contacted us uh with assistance from Mr. Helms uh and let us know that they were prepared, fully prepared to receive the in-person briefing. And so uh Vice President Greg Coltrane and I traveled to your beautiful part of the of the estate. And I have to say, it's been a while since I've been back there. Uh your county is just a beautiful location and I enjoyed, again, driving through that area of which I used to fly over uh when I was serving in the US Army as a helicopter pilot uh that you are in National Forest and your old county is just beautiful. So we traveled back there and we were able to meet with uh county manager McManus, uh Manus and Mrs. Heath, uh Mrs. Daniels, uh Mr. Joffson, I think Jordan Yancey are not with us this evening, but we had a good two and a half, uh two hour and forty-five minute discussion with them. So they heard more from us than they probably uh should have put up with, but it was a really good uh introduction for us. So here's the Cliff Notes for everything that we've done for you. This broadband expansion plan, if you wanted fiber to the home for every uh person in uh in Montgomery County, it's a forty-two million dollar plan. Now, without this plan, you really wouldn't know what that number is and we've been, we've seen fairly wide uh uh cost ranges for doing uh multiple counties. Uh Greg, I think this is our fifteenth or sixteenth county that we've had the chance to do this review of. This is probably a ju- uh on the lower end of it uh and it's uh many counties are even higher than that. Uh so forty-two million dollars is, will build out of just over a thousand uh miles of fiber and it'll pass uh almost sixteen thousand homes or premises. If the take rate's about thirty percent, then that forty-two million grows to fifty-two million. The good news there is that all of those costs are absorbed by River Street Networks and uh we, as we add on new households that are within two thousand feet of the uh main lines where we build the uh fiber infrastructure along main highways, then if the the house or the premises within two thousand feet, there's no cost to the individual homeowner. There's no contracts and we're priced, I think reasonably priced. I'll show you the pricing schedule uh in a in a little bit. So uh when you uh add those up, uh that's additional ten, about ten million dollars to get thirty percent of the households. Uh we'd love to have that many households or more. We also did the fixed wireless uh plan to get uh adequate decent coverage of your county. Uh we need a uh estimated twenty-six towers and the cost is going to be around ten million dollars. That gives us a coverage areas of about eighty-seven, uh eighty-eight hundred households. Uh then this uh the, just the nature and the physics of fixed wireless reduces the serviceable locations of those down to thirty-two hundred and twenty-eight households. You're very fortunate, you're in a small group of counties in uh North Carolina. We all know that there are a hundred counties. You're in a handful or several handfuls of counties with a full broadband expansion plan. Now, what that does is it serves you very well in that uh all the grants that we're going to uh look at and try to participate with you on uh would require this kind of knowledge so that we know what to submit on your behalf. No county that we currently work with has the kind of funds it takes to fund a a fully uh fibered solution for their county, no county, they just don't have that kind of funds. So uh the estimated shelf life of your broadband expansion plan is about five years. Uh we with finding that estimate holding very well. And so if no county can afford this uh this uh level of 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 cost, what do we want to do to close that gap or help partner with you on closing that gap? Uh in doing that, I'd like to just talk about a little bit about who we are first. Our DNA is a co-op. So we're citizens and members owned, uh we're not only are the people who take our service are customers, but they're also our owners and our members. So that's our DNA and we've been around since nineteen fifty-one, headquartered out of Wilkes, North Carolina with with approximately three thirty, three hundred or thirty thousand accounts, twenty-three in North Carolina. And we're starting to service Virginia in a in a big way. Uh you'll see some uh plans down the road. We have a hundred and forty-six million in assets. Our annual revenues is growing past fifty-six million recently and employ a little over two hundred and ten uh employees currently. We're wholly owned, uh River Street is wholly owned by Wilkes Telecommunications uh membership co-op. And what that does is allow us to work with counties like yours because we're not contiguous with a typical co-op mentality. Uh we have this uh for-profit organization wholly owned by this D and A uh membership co-op. Uh and so we're fully uh owned by them and controlled by them and mainly funded by them. We service North Carolina, Virginia, South Carolina, Georgia and some clients in Tennessee. We solely focus, just like we did when we were started in nineteen fifty-one, is to serve the unserved. When they couldn't get telephones, they solved their own problem by developing a co-op and that's what we're still doing now and we're doing it for broadband instead of telephone. We thought it'd be helpful to show you some definitions or some terms that we use uh in our uh in our uh industry that you may not be familiar with you. As you read down those and you can read just as well as I can, I'm going to talk about this reverse auction concept a little bit because it plays an important role in just a few minutes on some things that I will discuss with you. So this re- uh think of this reverse auction as a uh, instead of increasing the cost or bid on a on object, the Federal Communications Commission uh released this product uh the on this uh funds uh so that they developed it as a reverse auction. And so they define an area and say, we want fiber in this area. We want this in these uh census block groups is the is the area that we bid on. And you bid, they said, this is how many households, this is with the group. And so each or each round of the auction, uh eat uh the participating groups are bidding lower and lower to accomplish that task. And that bid is how much the federal government is going to have to put in under their funds to get you and to incentivize you to use it. So this reverse auction concept is we bid uh in most counties and most census blocks groups. Uh there were some incumbents who bid ever lower and lower to the point where it made no sense for anybody to be bidding that low. And it has a, it has an impact on you because there were quite a few funds called the Rural Digital Opportunity Funds that you see uh on this list uh uh called ARDOF that were bid so low, but there were a good chunk of Montgomery County that were bid on by these incumbents at a very low rate. And so as you read down those uh helpful terms, that reverse auction to me is an important element and what we're going to talk about. So the service area that that I wanted to show you, so this is where we started. Uh are you able to see my cursor in around this uh chopped up donut here that and uh Galax, just south of Galax?
Yes.
That's that's Wilkes Telecommunications Membership Co-op. Every citizen, every member of the co-op has fiber to the home. Wilkes County was the first county to be able to do that. Uh and uh so the uh, you see the area in the middle there had already been serviced by the incumbent uh provider there and had good service. There was no reason for us to build out into that area. So we built that area and all of our, or all of our clients are now have access to fiber. Uh Greg and his organization did a similar thing down in and the Hyde and Beaufort County area uh in this eastern portion of North Carolina. Uh they also brought fiber to many uh of their membership corporation and continue to be working to develop that. These other green areas that you see are a combination of uh fiber, copper and fixed wireless. Uh I meant, I meant to mention early, Greg is coming to you from this area down here in Bellhaven, North Carolina and I'm coming to you from Hickory, North Carolina, where I built and uh and organized a fixed wireless uh region uh to uh provide broadband to my area. Wilkes Telecommunication purchased us in two thousand nineteen, us being North Carolina Wireless for our uh clients as well as our expertise in fixed wireless to make sure that we continue to build out in a good way. These other areas that you see in Virginia and uh North Carolina are all uh areas that are serviced by elements of River Street Networks at this point. So a project example of of, as we look at Montgomery County, how are we going to put this together? So we took a model like King and Queen County, that's just one county, even though they have two names, King and Queen County. They're a county of about seven, just over seven thousand residents. So it's a small number of population spread over a very large area that's mainly agricultural and definitely rural. So we uh we have this issue of them not having much money to bring to the table and uh and how we're going to fund that. So we looked at uh providing locations of thirty-eight hundred households or premises. Uh the route miles are almost five hundred and eighty uh route miles of fiber. Uh the Connect America Fund brought five million, just over five million. The RIT is a rappahannic Indian tribe. They brought a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars because they're in that area and they'll benefit from it. Those, this county with small amount of funds brought thirty-eight hundred dollars to the project. And this organization called Virginia, Nevada, V A T I, is Virginia Telecom Initiative uh brought almost six thousand dollars this. River Street participated at the thirty-three hundred level and the entire project is eighteen million dollars. And that's how we funded it. You see this cost per passing, I'm going to come back to that uh in a later slide. This is a reasonable cost of uh passing, although a little bit on the high side because of the way the the county is spread out and the and the uh ruralness of this county. So this is one way that we might be able to to structure an org- uh a funding method for Montgomery County. This is a different slide with the same information, uh shows the percentages that were brought by the federal government, uh the rappahannic tribe, uh the state funds called Vatti uh and the local funds and then the River Street funds. Uh at the eighteen million dollar, we found a way to fund that and that project is ongoing right uh right now. We had a groundbreaking, it was well attended uh and was uh well covered by the news media. So this is a a broader picture of the things that we're doing in Virginia. So looking at fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-nine locations, we're, we have an ongoing project that's coming together right now and funded by all these organizations that will uh cover those many uh locations in sixteen counties. Uh so we're upwards of this uh huge uh project total cost of three hundred and, almost three hundred and sixty million dollars. And those are all in the works as we're, as we're speaking now. Greg, is anything else you wanted to talk about on this Virginia slide before we leave?
Yeah, I I did want to inject that in working with the counties in North Carolina and Virginia, as Bill alluded to earlier, it was really quick that we found out, you know, it's just going to be hard to swallow the elephant. And the elephant meaning the forty uh two million dollars to build your county. So when you start looking at that and you say, I want to eat it a spoonful at the time and you've got a provider who has a lot of knowledge and has a lot of experience working with county government, working with federal and state programs to try to go and win grant funds, then if you're successful in winning those funds and county government can match and River Street can match, all of a sudden you can create a business case that makes a lot more sense. So I don't want you to be scared when you look at the total cost to build a project for your county and immediately um, you know, feel like we just, there's, we got to tuck our tail and run. There's no way we can afford to do this. You have a way to do this because you now have a complete design. You've got a a roadmap that tells you what to do uh as far as how much it's going to cost. And then you've got a provider that has years of experience building fiber networks and the opportunity to sit down at the table with you and take you to next level, basically. Uh when you look at the counties here, those counties have have contributed uh somewhere around twenty to twenty-five percent in the model. And when we approached all the counties, they were like, I don't know how we're going to get this done, we just can't afford it. But we um over a couple of years working with them, were able to help them figure out a way to secure those funds. COVID, as Bill said earlier, opened a huge door. Um companies, I mean ca- counties all over the country uh were receiving American Recovery Money and they didn't know whether or not they could spend that money on broadband. Well, that ruling came out just a few weeks ago from the Federal Treasury and uh it's now been uh addressed and everybody knows that it can be used for all things broadband. And so a lot of counties uh have had other major important expenses. They've had sewer and water and a lot of issues to deal with and some have already spent some of their money. Others have bookmarked some of their money for broadband. But um there, there is a way for us to get this done. And the importance behind this model, I know it's Virginia, it's not North Carolina, um but we moved into Virginia because Virginia's grant programs were heavily focused um with deep initiatives to try to leverage federal assets, federal dollars that have already been thrown out there on the table. And even though we don't have some of the same offerings in North Carolina, um Bill's going to talk to you in just a minute about some of the other programs that are coming and I'll chime in and help him if he needs it.
Thank you, Greg. So one of the things we want you to know is that as these uh ideas get developed and these projects and infrastructure gets developed, pricing is an issue. And so we, as we build out, we look for a take rate. We love thirty percent, anything higher than thirty percent really starts to benefit many, many more people. But the pricing has to be reasonable and we believe that we're uh completely competitive in that arena and continue to to strive to be so. The other thing is because we have this co-op mentality in this DNA, we've never raised prices. Once we set prices, we don't set a uh introductory price and then six months later or twelve months later increase your pricing. So the, for the fiber uh at uh a hundred by a hundred is uh ninety-five dollars. It can be reduced by this low income lifeline to an eighty-five uh eighty-five, seventy-five uh price point. Uh we do have uh intermediate or medium pricing of a five hundred by five hundred. We also have a gigabit service that uh starts at a little over uh a hundred and thirty-five dollars. Uh that's the fiber side. On the wireless side, if 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 it's deployed, you choose to, for us to continue to think about uh deploying wireless, then we're going to uh attempt to deliver twenty-five by three and that pricing is a little bit different. Starts out at seventy-five with a low income, it becomes sixty-five a month. Again, there's no contract, uh you you ask us to provide service to you, we provide service to you. Call us next month and tell us that you no longer want the service. There's no uh exit uh cost or entry or exit cost. You don't pay anything upfront and you don't pay anything to get out if you want to get out. Uh we believe that.
Go ahead, let me, let me quickly address the um affordability uh process. We have just recently um applied for the next generation of the EBV program, which was a federal program that was funding fifty dollars for low income, uh low to middle income families. Um we've signed up for that program and have received notice that we can now participate. What that program has been renamed to is the ACP program. Um and the ACP program is going to reduce down to thirty dollars a month. So if you are a low-income individual uh in your household, is a low-income household and you meet certain criteria, you can sign up and then you'll get a credit on your bill. That takes these packages that you see here and drastically reduces them. In fact, we're getting ready to um implement a a low-income pricing package which would give you fifty meg by twenty-five meg and that package would be available for as low as thirty-five dollars a month. Um and our state is actually talking about uh a stopgap solution to meet the difference between the new thirty-dollar ACP plan and the fifty-dollar difference that got reduced. And so um there are opportunities for us to help customers get this service at a very affordable rate. Make a go.
Thank you, Greg. So this is the broadband expansion plan that we delivered to uh Frankie Madison and his his staff. Uh it, this is the index of This is the index of that product that we produced, Greg showed it to you earlier. It looks like that, I think you have seven or eight copies there and we can provide more if you'd like. It's a, it's a document of a hundred, total of a hundred and twelve pages. So we put this slide in there to show you Montgomery County, but how close you are to an organization that, that River Street purchased and is absorbing into, that has telephone, copper, has some fiber and it has some fixed wireless. So you're very close to that. What that gives us is a, a jump off point. It's always close, be better to physically be close to an area that you hope to work with. And we certainly have that with LRB Telephone there. So these are your current, on page five, you would see who your current providers are. CenturyLink is the predominant one there is, as you know. It says nine hundred and forty max download speed and nine hundred and forty upload speeds. That's a very, very small portion of their entire customer base. They're in twenty of your twenty two block groups. But most of your, most of the customers who have that service and many of you probably do, so you know this already, that the speeds you get on the download are six or seven and your upload speeds are a meg or, meg or meg below. I think County Manager, Manis confirmed that with the, when we had our discussion with them. Charter's your other larger provider there with eighteen of the, of the block groups. They do have better speeds on the download, but their upload speeds are limited because they're dealing with the, with the coax cable that the, used to deliver, only be concerned about the download speeds with delivering television to the households. With the, the increase in broadband needs now, especially on the upload, they struggle to provide the upload speeds. You have an organization that we are familiar with, Open Broadband is a fixed wireless in, in four of the block groups. We're in a very small portion down there near LRB Telephone. We hope to grow that extensively and then you're familiar with Randall, Randolph Telephone Membership Co-op. A co-op just similar to what we are at, at our home base. So this is a recap on page nine of the, of the miles passed, a little over a thousand miles of fiber in this plan. And those within two thousand feet, the state maintained road with no cost to them to become members. It passes almost sixteen thousand households. It's a G pond, so it's an architecture that is expandable and growth and it's easier to maintain with being that latest technology. So we've broken your county into nine zones of distributed geographically, geographically. And what that does is if there are some zones or portions of your county that you say, these folks have just got, this area has just got to have it to meet some goal or requirement of the, of the county managers or the county commissioners. Then we've broken it down into nine geographical zones for you to show you the cost in those nine zones. If, if we want to work from that end of it, rather than work at the whole elephant at one time. We do work with qualified instruct contractors in our efforts. So how much broadband do you need with telemedicine and telework, homework from school or from home now and distance learning, more and more bandwidth is required. So we gave you just a thumbnail sketch of, of where broadband used to be, where it's going to. And we believe that this ability to be able to deliver a gigabit to you is going to become even more important, important and, and maybe as, as few as three to four, if not five years. That five hundred megabits per second is probably going to become critical at some time with the delivery speeds and, and the, and the applications that we can do there. There are many parts of your beautiful county that people would move to if they had access and uploads and download speeds. You've probably heard the stories, your realtors are probably have told you the stories. So the FCC Ardo funds, Rural Digital Opportunity Funds, it's a twenty billion dollars that was conducted in two auctions. Phase one, we fully participated with. And nine billion of those sixteen billion was awarded. That means six point eight billion dollars was left on the table. And, and it was just, I think it's, it was a shame that the, the auction played out the way it did. And some of the larger incumbents use the, the reverse auction in a way that was not as productive as it could have been had they played a little bit more friendly in, in the box and, and stopped the bidding before it got too low to really ever do anything. Now, the good news is there's a phase two auctions and that money will be rolled over to that. But all that did was delay the inevitable of those federal funds coming out to the counties that need this service.
So and Bill, we're actually a little bit unsure whether or not there's actually going to be a phase two. There was, it was supposed to be a phase two auction, but as it stands right now, we're not sure what's going to happen with the new monies that have been in, in, you know, pushed out the door.
As it gets sorted out. So this is a, a Macbeur County and the blue is the, the Ardo funds that were awarded at a very low reserve. I'd point your attention to that last number, six hundred ninety eight dollars and ninety nine cents per location. That's the, that's what will be awarded under the, as, as the way it was bid, the reverse auction was bid so low that we don't see a reasonable way that a organization could roll out a fiber infrastructure to all of those households with that low bid. And so the likelihood of this network happening under this federal funds is very small. And again, a lot of money was left on the table by the way it was conducted. And so a lot of people observed that, I think it'll be better in future rounds. But it does complicate a little bit our activities in Montgomery County in that we have to now deal with this because they've got those funds and they've tied this, these locations and areas up for six years. Unless they release and, and that is problematic, I'm sure in your eyes as well as our eyes. The, on page twenty eight, again, we reiterate, reiterate the cable miles that this plan would provide, a little over a thousand, passing almost sixteen thousand homes for a cost of forty one point seven million dollars. Jumps up to fifty two million dollars if there's a thirty, thirty percent take rate, that would cover forty seven hundred and ninety seven households. We get a take rate of a hundred percent, again, that cost delta between forty one and seventy five million would be covered by River Street because we love to add new customers. Again, no contracts, no cost to the individuals bringing those on. So we'd love to have that problem of, of funding those. As we move into the wireless portion, we thought again, it'd be helpful to have some terms to discuss. A covered area is an area where the RF signals will more than likely reach in our propagation studies. We normally have to have sufficient elevation for those access points to be able to give you that coverage area. Serviceable locations or households or structures within the coverage area that are proven to be serviceable, they have a strong enough signal that we can get a signal to them and they can get a signal back to the access point in sufficient strength that will hold a, a good connectivity. And then supportable locations are those that we can do all the two things above them, but it also will not overstretch the access point. So each access point will have a limited number of, of serviceable customers on those. And, and that was how we judge it. We monitor the number of customers, how much traffic is going there so that we make sure that access point doesn't get overloaded to the point where it's frustrating for people who are on there as existing customers. And an access point is nothing more than a tower, a water tower or a tall pole that we can operate our transmit and receive frequencies off of. This is the, the broadband expansion plan, fixed wireless supposition of twenty six elevated assets or access points. And these are the generalized locations. We typically don't try to get them to set in a location because there are many factors that go into getting that location. One is the landowner, the right of ways, all those things that may generally require us to move it to some degree. But twenty six would generally give you sufficient coverage of the areas that we're talking about. And almost eight, eight thousand eight hundred areas, again, at the cost of ten million dollars to roll that complete infrastructure out would give you, it would cover those who are reported on the FCC reporting households about just over six thousand households that are currently considered unserved, twenty five or three or less. That's on page seventy six through eighty five where that information on the fixed wireless is located. So during this process, the federal, the FCC Federal Communication Commission released some frequencies called the Citizens Band Radio Services. They auctioned off frequencies in that three point five gigahertz to three point seven gigahertz range. What that allowed us to do is allowed us to purchase those frequencies, they're called PALS. And in Montgomery County, we were able to secure four of those PALS, that's the maximum that we could get. That in essence give us, gives us licensed frequencies and that does multiple things to be able to give you better or more service. The first thing it gives us is frequency protection. In the unlicensed arena, which most WISP operated, most fixed wireless providers operate in, unlicensed, anybody can throw equipment up and anybody can interfere with you if they don't play nicely and, and follow the rules. Under CBRS frequencies, we're protected from that. And the second thing it gives us is it allows us to use more transmit and receive power at our access points, which gives us better connectivity to the individual homes and households. So CBRS auctions and the fact that River Street spent almost three million dollars to purchase the PALS for Northern County, North and South Carolina and Virginia, I think gives us a real good position. So grant opportunities that, that we are aware of and we continue to work with and massage and the rules are being promulgated as we, as we meet here tonight. I just sent Ms. He, a brand new broadband chart that shows the federal funds and how they're going to get dispensed and how they can be used. It just came out from a good source for us in, in the North Carolina, in Raleigh area. So the great grant is this growing rule, the economies with access to technology. It's a program run by the North County Department of Information Technology out of Raleigh. We know those folks well, we've worked with them closely and we continue to assist them with mapping, better maps and it's a good relationship with them. Those, that's an ongoing program that will be released as we go. The Bio Office is also assisting with the CARES funds, that's the coronavirus recovery funds, coronavirus aid relief and Economic Security Act funds, what CARES stands for. The SFC Rural Digital Opportunity Fund, I showed you some of the ramifications of how that first fund was run. And as Greg said, there may be a phase two. The Bio Office is developing the rules for the year three great, great grants as we work on those. The USDA will have reconnect federal funds in two thousand twenty two. And the one that we will probably see the most funds come through and have a big impact on Montgomery County is this NTIA funds at forty five billion dollar range. North Carolina Great Grant will be at least fifteen million dollars each year available for their, their programs. I think it's going to be more than that. We have some charts here that show you and I'll ask Greg to weigh in on these charts and help me explain those in a thumbnail sketch, Greg.
Sure, sure. So there was a little bit of a, of a teaser last week where Nate Denny and several others, Angie Bailey from the Broadband Infrastructure Office, gave a little bit of an insight into North Carolina's budget. When the budget was passed this last session, which took a long time if you didn't notice, funds were allocated, we're going to have close to a billion dollars in North Carolina. But the program is currently established based on areas that are twenty five and three that are considered unserved. While the federal government is rapidly working towards areas of less one hundred by twenty, considered unserved. So there's a little bit of a delta between that right now and our state is working diligently to try to work within the legislation they've been given. And also make it applicable to federal programs. But this, this program that they're putting together right now has an infrastructure and access piece and it has a digital literacy piece. The infrastructure and access piece is going to have nine hundred and seventy one million and then there'll be another fifty million in the digital literacy piece. But all funds of that billion dollars are supposed to be spent by two thousand twenty six. I think by two thousand twenty four, they have to be encumbered. So. When you look at the great grant program, they have three, three hundred and eighty million in that program. It upgrades and expands existing last mile grant programs to invest in future proofing technologies of speeds of at least one hundred by twenty. So in an area that's twenty five or three less speed, they're going to offer funds to help get them to a hundred by twenty or greater. Then there is the broadband make ready accelerator, which there'll be a hundred million in that. And there's the broadband mapping that they're putting a million dollars in that. Then there is this new program that's been created. We refer to it as the CAB program, it's the completing access to broadband grant program. It'll have four hundred million in it. This program's a little bit more interesting because I've not seen all of the rules on this yet. But I think there's going to be opportunity for us to look at some legitimately fiber funded areas. And then the stopgap solution has nine hundred, ninety million in it. And it will be more of a targeted grant process that will allow, I think, more subjective control of the broadband infrastructure office to fund projects that help meet getting people broadband temporarily until something else can be made available for them. USDA has a reconnect round three program that's just launched a month or so ago. I think the deadline for applications for this is in, in February, around the twenty second of February. USDA has been borrowing and granting money to people for many years. That's how many of the cooperatives existed by borrowing money from USDA and then paying it back at low interest over long periods of time. They have a hundred percent grant program that's for tribal government. They have a hundred percent loan program with up to two hundred million available. They have a combo where you can have a fifty fifty match. So you can borrow twenty five million and you can get a grant for twenty five million if you qualify. So fifty million totally for that project. And then there is a hundred percent grant program that's a bucket of three hundred and fifty million. And that still requires, even though it is a hundred percent grant, it's interesting, you still have to have a twenty five percent match. So they give you a hundred percent grant for seventy five percent. I know with this particular program, you won't be able to use ARPA money. They've been very specific that they do not want to allow that. And we've not seen any changes in their, in their opinions of how the money should be allowed. And then really this is the biggest one that we want the county of Montgomery to focus on. The National Telecommunications and Information Administration is a federal branch called NTIA. They've had a broadband infrastructure program for a couple of years now and they just, we just went through a grant cycle that we're hoping sometime in the next forty five days, we will hear some awards starting to come out. They were supposed to announce awards the end of last year, but they received so many. I think they received four times what they had money for. So these programs are becoming highly competitive. If you'll flip to the next slide. This Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act that was signed into law November the fifteenth is the funding mechanism for this. Sixty five billion was allocated to close the digital divide across the United States and all fifty states. NTIA is to administer forty eight billion of that money in grants for specific infrastructure. They've written, the written comments for this process or program are due by February the fourth and then it's expected sometime between the spring and early summer that funding guidelines will come out or they will go ahead and open the window to start accepting applications. Potential grant applications are encouraged, they're encouraging us and counties and everybody who wants to build broadband to start now, planning for your application, which means isolating what your project needs to be. Where's your matching dollars going to come from? And so I think the biggest thing that we can encourage Montgomery County right now is to start looking at how do you create that bucket of what we call a twenty to twenty five percent match? If Montgomery County was to say, we want to go through an RFP process, which I think you guys are working on when we talked to the county when we were there before. An RFP, as you guys are familiar with, will allow you to pick a partner. You'll receive all of these responses back. Everybody that submits an application back to the county will tell you how they think is the best way to get you where you need to be. And then the county gets to choose. And when you select the partner, then you and that partner can go after these programs. And I would suggest that if the county had four million dollars that they wanted to put down, then we could go after a sixteen million dollar project for Montgomery County. If the county could say over the next three years, and let's say that the NTIA application is a three year build timeline. It's, it's, it's highly probable that if the county could allocate funds for three years during the build timeline. Let's say the county wanted to do eight million, then if, or nine million, if the county wanted to do nine million, it would be three million a year for three years. Then you just multiply nine times four, and that's the size of the package that we could go after. Now, there are limits on some of these grant applications where you can only apply for as much as fifty million or sixty million. And that will be laid out in NTIA's program here in the next couple of months. So I, I think the objective today was to help you understand, yes, it's expensive to get broadband to the people in your county. If, if people, if there was a business case to do this, it would have been done years ago. You do have Rural Digital Opportunity Fund monies that have been awarded to a provider in your county. It is still undetermined whether or not that project will happen. And if that, if your county is built with those funds, then that's great, because that's going to give your county a huge injection in the arm. But that's a six year build timeline, and that six year clock begins when that provider who won in your county starts receiving their first installment of payment. So if they started receiving a payment the end of this year, you know, you'd be looking at. As much as it might be the end of twenty twenty eight before you would actually have customers that would be getting fiber based broadband service. So there's a lot of what ifs, there's a lot of unknowns. But in order for the county to be in control of their destiny, they really could sure up some funds and they could pick a partner. And they could go ahead and start working on areas that really need it the most. And, and we would love to be able to work with you. We will champion an RFP process when you guys put that out in the coming months. And I think we are done with slides, and I know we took a little while.
Greg, I'd make two comments on this slide. One is this February deadline of questions to the NTIA that we feel like that's our responsibility. But certainly if you have something that you want to address, we'll try to address it for you. If not, we'll get those questions or concerns to the NTIA. But that, that February fourth deadline is really on River Street, and we accept that. This timing of your broadband expansion plan is excellent in that these funds are going to become available in early summer. And so an RFP in the, in the next while will be wonderfully timed as well. And we'd love to be a part of that response to, to you when you probably make that. So those thoughts come out of it, and we do appreciate your time. We talked a little bit longer than we probably should have, but we certainly would welcome questions or concerns.
So guys, any questions? I know there were some that you brought up when we were together on Thursday. So anything that you would like to bring up to Greg or Bill, since we have them in front of us?
Could I ask a question? This is John.
Yes, you may, John.
So it, it does appear as though your organization does seek to bring access to remote areas. We're not talking about going to Main Street to provide access, because we already have that. Specifically, I guess, it goes to the question that, that I posed at the last meeting. You know, what is the right answer between the, the forty two million, you know, the, the top end of fiber to the home? And I know that at least my interpretation of the wireless network would not necessarily be as substantial as we would like. You know, is there a hybrid concept to, to start this process to go towards what you, you referenced as far as those in the most need? You know, in our region being outside of the municipalities, I guess would be, you know. Is, is there a way to, to, I understand the concept as far as we definitely need to get an RFP partner. So that we can, we can discuss, you know, what type of a match we want to maybe come after these, these larger funds to, to tackle this huge project. You know, are you able to custom fit? Is it, is it an all or nothing concept, I guess? Can you custom fit to where we can start possibly with wireless to the regions that need it the most? Or is it a question, if we want to go, if we want to go fiber, then we've got to go down that road in the first place? And, and, and there's no turning back from that. Is there a hybrid concept between the ten million and the forty two million?
Yeah, so let me unpack some of that for you. You have, in building a fixed wireless network, you have to transport the internet access. And you really need a fiber network to transport it. So just as we all have a cell phone, our cell phones don't work without fiber connectivity. Or a microwave from a tower to another tower that has fiber connectivity. So everything comes back to a landline at some point in time. Internet's the same way. So in order for you to have a, a very good, strong fixed wireless network, you would need a backbone in the county. So what we typically encourage people to do is to focus on the build out of a backbone first. And then using that backbone, if they wanted to, if a county wanted to invest in doing fixed wireless. Only after we've helped you educate, helped educate you on what you will get and how long that life will be on that technology. It's, it's a holistic approach to building the backbone, getting the wireless in place. Going after funds to grow that fiber to that last mile to those homes in the community. You've got about a five year life expectancy on wireless technologies before you're probably going to have to upgrade it again. There are limitations on fixed wireless. There are perfectly wonderful options for fixed wireless, but conditions have to be just right. And so when you're trying to address the masses in one area and say, we want to try to get this entire area fixed wireless. We might would have to put up multiple towers in that region to really fully saturate it in order to do so. So that starts running your price up. What we really wanted to indicate to you here is, is that the cost per location to connect customers. With fixed wireless versus a fiber solution are all the things you need to consider. And what does that cost look like? If we're going to spend our money, do we want to spend our money in a way that we can get people serviced quickly? But we know we're going to have to upgrade it, or it's not going to last very long before we're going to need fiber form anyway. Every county does it different. We have worked with, we're working with over sixty five counties in North Carolina and Virginia right now. And out of the counties that we work with, everybody has a different appetite to do this. All the way from the county that wants to fund a hundred percent fiber to every stitch of their customers, their, their members of their county. Down to the, the county that wants to just do some fixed wireless projects, we can do anything in between.
So, and I just want to, I want a closing question here as far as what we're, what is a part of the conversation that we're going to be having? Is basically, we're going to need to be looking for a twenty five percent commitment to, to get a part of this, of this, this, this funding process. So we're looking at three million dollars towards wireless, or we're looking at ten to twelve million dollars over the course of the next three to five years. Of commitment from the county to get involved with a partner to go seek these funds to go one of two different, two different options. So we're at, at the, I guess not the max, but if we're going to be, if we're going for a hundred percent here, we need to be looking at somewhere around twelve million dollars. In the short term, or we're at least going to be into this two to three million dollars to start down this path.
Yes, and, and I, I know you were trying to go in the direction with your question earlier about, we've got Main Street, and then we've got the rural pockets. We've already isolated in your study the areas where you already have adequate broadband. So you know where those areas are. Our state is working, they've put a million dollars in to enhance the mapping that we have today. There's, it won't be long before we're, we're going to have more information than we can possibly handle about where we need broadband. Once we know a lot more about that, which you already guys have in front of you in this document or in a digital document. We can carve out those areas and say, there's no need for us to spend county money at a twenty five percent match. And go get federal dollars or state dollars to build where, where you already have adequate broadband. And adequate broadband is pretty much becoming anything one hundred by twenty or greater. So you can pretty much look at your cable incumbent in the area, and you can say, well, in all of our main towns, we've got cable service. And that broadband is great, you know, or, you know, maybe some people have opinions about whether or not the services, the customer service is good. The county's trying to get people broadband, and you need to get the ones who don't have it first.
Greg, I have a quick question. So the ARDOF funds, so that were awarded, and I know there's a six year window. So obviously that, those funds were to cover based on the map to a whole bunch of the areas that are underserved. And you or Bill stated that it could be challenging for us to get funding available to go after an option in those same areas. So can you just elaborate on that just a little bit, so we understand what that looks like, knowing that we're kind of stuck with that unless they're willing to release, right?
That's right. So when you look at the cost to build fiber in an area or a hybrid coax fiber based network. We like to consider about fifty five hundred dollars per customer is the, is a, is a good cost to pay to pass that customer. When you look at this slide here that's in front of you, you can see that the winners in this auction are receiving seven hundred dollars per location. So, you know, it's going to put a lot of burden on the provider to build this network. Will they build it? We don't know, they could very well do it, they have deep pockets. But they won almost everything in North Carolina, and so they've got the whole state to build. And when they start getting their funds, then they've got to figure out how to get it built in a year. And so I'm not, I don't want to bash or talk about anybody, you know, talk down about anyone. They've got a hurdle that they've got to deal with, and it's not just in your county.
Will it hinder us from being able to get other funds, though? I guess that's my question. So knowing, you know, how we go after that through an RFP with a partner, will that hinder us?
It, it could very well hinder. As it stands today, the state has already decided that they won't allow any matching dollars from ARDOF. And so they're not going to fund any areas where ARDOF has already been awarded. That's, that's what the current legislation says. So all of these areas that you see in blue today would not be applicable for any funding in the state. Now, on the federal level, some of the federal programs have said that they will offer matching dollars to Rural Digital Opportunity Fund winners. Or they will allow other providers to apply. And if they can show that they would build it faster than six years, they might could still be awarded the money.
So within our packet, or could you, is, do we have any overlay map that shows what ARDOF has been awarded in our area? But then also the underserved areas that would be, you know, so areas that potentially we could look at strategically. That are still underserved, that weren't part of the ARDOF, you know, so we, again, if we're going to create a roadmap of potentially how we can make this happen. Is that something that would be available to us?
It can definitely be made available. This, and that would be something that I would suggest that we would look at after you, you get through with your RFP process.
Okay.
But so in between this broadband expansion plan being created for you guys, a lot of things changed. So we started down the road of putting this together, and the industry just kept changing, COVID pushed all that. And so when this program was created, they basically went through the state and they said, anything that's less twenty five and three qualifies in the Rural Digital Opportunity Fund auction. So pretty much everything in North Carolina that was won by this incumbent. Was all the less twenty five and three areas. So when you look at the state, there's really, at that point in time, we were sitting here scratching our head because we were saying, well, based on all of the legislation. We just solved the broadband problem for North Carolina, there's no more people, any, anybody out there that doesn't have, that won't have reliable broadband. But now the Federal Reserve came back, and the Federal Reserve has said, well, the FCC says twenty five and three is the minimum for broadband. But we really think it needs to be higher than that, so we're going to fund programs to get people in areas that are less one hundred by twenty qualified. So federally, there will be money available for less one hundred by twenty areas, which could be some of these tan areas that you see inside the blue. From a state level right now, we don't know how to address it.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, thank you for answering my question. Anybody else?
The other thing I would add is also, these areas that are identified are identified using the old FCC reporting on the four seventy sevens. That information is outdated and antiquated. So a, a provider could have declared an entire census block served because one household has service in that area. They are now funding, you saw the hundred million dollars for better mapping, and River Street participated in some of those efforts to provide better mapping. They're now going down to the granularity where they can pinpoint a house at a specific location and say whether it's served or unserved. And then it may be eligible for funding where that previously had been eliminated entire census block. So the maps are going to get better, which means there are going to be more unserved, underserved areas that are going to be fundable. And all those things are working for us, even though this bidder has thrown a curve in us with this block of funds. But also NTIA says that if they've got the award, but we could still award you money if you can do it with three years or less. And so all those things are factors that we would bring to bear on this, on this project.
Thank you, Bill. Any other questions?
And all of these things are still culminating and coming together, so.
We so appreciate your time this evening, lots of information. So, thank you, thank you for, for coming to the county too, back in December, right after, after Christmas and delivering it to that group, and we appreciate the information tonight.
You're very welcome, thank you all so much, hope you all have a good evening. We look forward to working with your leadership.
Thank you very much, our pleasure.
Thank you.
All right. Bye bye, guys. All right, I think that's all for presentation this evening, correct, Mr. Manus?
That is correct.
We're going to move on, if there's anyone that is on the call, we are moving into our public forum time. Is there anyone that's here to speak during public forum? I don't see any folks that could potentially be that. All right, public forum, going once, going twice. Okay, so no public forum this evening. So, Mr. Manager, I'm going to turn it over to you, if you have any manager reports this evening.
I do have one item, and that would be an introduction. Mike Burrows is joining us virtually, he's under the Michael's iPhone. Mike, he's just started within the last few weeks as our planning director, we're happy to have him on board. And he will be a familiar face as rezonings and things like, things like that come to your attention. So welcome, Mike, and we look forward to working with you, both on a staff level and on a legislative level. So there's, here's Mike. You got your speech ready, Mike?
I do, I have a, not, I don't have an introduction speech, but I did want to say hi to everybody, and I look forward to working with you all.
I was definitely wondering who that Michael was up in the corner of my screen. Nice to meet you, Michael, look forward to working with you.
Nice to meet you also.
Hey, I think you were going to speak, sorry. Or Mary or someone, I heard somebody else, no?
I was just going to say, welcome to Montgomery County, we're happy to have you here.
Thank you so much, yeah, I'm looking forward to it. I love Montgomery County already.
Good.
Good place to be.
It is.
All right, anything else, Frankie?
Uh, that's it, other than the standard reports that you have in your packet, which I will do my best to answer any questions you have regarding those. But otherwise, that's it for me.
Do you guys have any questions or any comments about the reports that were in your packet?
I do not.
No.
No, everybody's good. Well, I know that we have covered lots of information this evening, so many things to get our brains engaged in. And, and definitely needs of the county that we've been talking about for a while, so figuring out how to, to make all those things come to fruition. But I appreciate your flexibility today, we had to kind of punt with going to Zoom after mid morning. So thank you guys for being able to do that. I miss being with you in person, but this was pretty easy breezy as well. Um, so with that, I do need a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
So Mary makes a motion to adjourn, I need a second.
I'll second.
Okay, makes a second, so any opposed to adjourning the meeting? All right, guys, meeting adjourned, have a wonderful evening and a great rest of the week, and let's pray for no yucky weather this weekend.
Right.
Keep our fingers crossed. So, and Michael, we'll see. Keep our fingers crossed. So, and Michael, we'll see you soon. Thank you, guys.
That's great. Thank you.
Bye bye.